This conference will now be recorded.
We have an exciting weekend coming up in the county.
We do, we do, we do. Ms. Rollins, you're not muted? Yeah, I think it's gonna be very nice.
Yeah, I think so too.
I'm just putting my face up there so y'all, we can see each other for once, but uh.
Yeah.
Can we be casual?
Good to see you.
It's good to see you, sir.
How y'all doing?
Doing fine.
It's good to see everybody. Yes.
We all good, Ms. Rollins?
We all good, yes, we are.
All right, all right.
Well, Mr. Mr. Calhoun.
Yeah, he should be hopping on in a minute now, he was just getting. You all believe it is December, it's almost January already. Wow.
Yeah, time, time has flown by.
Yes. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Powell.
Ms. Rollins, is that hand sanitizer?
It is. Yes, it is. I have some over there, I still have some here, I have some behind me, in my purse, I have it everywhere.
I've washed my hands so much this year, I don't know what to say.
Oh no. Yes.
This is Tim Calhoun, can y'all hear me?
We can, sir.
We can, we can hear you, sir, but why we can't see you? We gotta get everybody here except you.
Yeah.
You know what? You know what I should do? I should have really signed on because guess what I got yesterday?
A haircut.
A haircut.
I did, I did.
Very good.
But my, my, even my internet, when I use the hotspot, it uh work, it does not work well at all. I lose phone calls on the computer, I, I can't share my screen, so I don't wanna, you know, I don't wanna miss a second of this thing happening, dialing in on my cellphone, so I just dial in anyway.
Maybe you should complain to the county about getting broadband.
Well, I, my understanding, supposed to be here by June the 30th of 2021, which is about the, which is about the time we'll be going back to work, so it's not gonna help me at all.
Is, you know, usually this time of year, we have children that give us Christmas curls. Is Ms. Rollins a good singer, or who's the singer in the group?
You, you, you do not want me to go there, Mr. Jury, so um.
I bet Ms. Little sings well.
Mr. Mr. Elliot. No, I'm not going there either. We didn't have that.
Oh, I know Reverend Elliott sings, but I've heard him.
For tonight.
Might be Reverend Elliott.
Yes.
That's what I said, I've heard him sing before.
So, Catch Me Su- Catch Me Sundays on, on Facebook.
I've heard you, I've heard you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, the hour has arrived for us to open up our meeting, our virtual, our board meeting for December the 17th. And at this time, we're gonna ask our legal representative, Ms. Powell, if she would come and give us our opening statement in reference to our virtual meeting.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This meeting is held electronically due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which has made it unsafe to assemble in a quorum in a single location. This meeting is convened by Go-To Meetings as posted on the county's website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Uh, I have been informed that it's a possibility that we may have Minister LaJune Stone on the line. Are you present, uh, Ms. Stone? We don't have Minister Stone?
Doesn't look like it.
Okay, let us pray. Heavenly Father, I come humbly before your throne of mercy and grace, thanking you, Lord, for your goodness and your mercy. Lord, I thank you for blessing a county called Surrey, Virginia, for the year of 2020. In the midst of all, Lord, you stood by us and you kept us. And Lord, I thank you for giving us this opportunity to service your people and to be of service unto our fellow man. We ask now, Lord, that you would come on this night and lead, guide, and direct us, and let the things that we do be pleasing in your sight. And any good that we do, Lord, we give you the glory, honor, and praise. Bless us now with your presence, and we shall be blessed indeed. It is in the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Might we now have, amen, might we have a moment of silence? Thank you. At this time, I want to ask, uh, Ms. Little, our representative, uh, from the Bacon Castle District, if she would come and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I do have a flag. I do have a flag.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Little. Uh, board members, we have before us the agenda for our call meeting on tonight, and uh, trusting and praying that we've had an opportunity to look at the agenda. Are there any questions on our agenda for tonight? If there be no questions, I ask now that if Ms. Chapman would give us a roll call, uh, vote for the adoption of the agenda. Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliot.
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
And I don't see Mr. Holmes on, but if Mr. Holmes is available. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chapman. Motion is carried at this time. Our first item on the agenda for tonight is the new business, and it's in reference to Dominion Power easement for rural broadband project that Mr. Calhoun had just talked about. So at this time, I'm going to ask if the county administrator would come and give us, uh, our statements regarding our new business for tonight.
Okay, um, since Ms. Powell is on, I will let her talk about the actual agreement itself. But one of the things before she comes on, um, that I will mention, um, just to give you all an update. I think Dominion has started off, when we first talked about this, I think it was about seventy-eight or seventy-nine easements that they needed to obtain. Um, as of a report I received on December the 11th, they still had needed sixty easements, and I'm gonna go ahead and read a statement that I got from them on this whole project. Um, it typically says that, um, they cannot typically start a project until all easements are secured. But fortunately enough, for the Surrey project, a large portion of the company's infrastructure is located along road frontage, which could give us an option to divert our facilities underground within the beat our right of way. They say that this option is much more expensive and time-consuming to the engineer, but they also explore options to build the new overhead infrastructure on the other side of the road if we can secure the easement, such as the one that we asking you all to consider tonight. So they are saying that the overhead options could prove to be more viable in certain situations. And as of December the 11th, as I stated, they had sixty easement outstanding, but they do plan to start construction in January on a few more segments where all the easements have been secured. Just wanna share that tidbit of information, okay? And Ms. Powell, um, can go over the actual agreement?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, um, there are two easements that were included in your packet. Um, if board recalls, uh, the board approved about five or so easements, I believe in September, um, that allows Dominion to install fiber optic lines, which would then attach to its current poles, so internet providers like PGE C could use those poles to hook up internet for, um, residents and businesses. Dominion is now in need of two additional easements for the same purpose, um, and those two easements Dominion is asking for to make up for some of the easements they have not received from other individuals. The difference between the easements and the, in your packet and the ones that the board approved previously is that Dominion is creating a new pathway, as Ms. Rollins, um, previously spoke about. One of the easements will be underground and the other one will be overhead. So it will require installing a new pole, I believe, at the Surrey County Medical Center. Um, and so Dominion will probably get approval from them as well. So staff suggests approving these easements, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have about it.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Uh, fellow board members, do you have any questions, uh, for Ms. Powell in reference to, uh, the easement? Underground and the overhead.
Yeah, my, my jury, I've got just a overall question.
Yes, Mr. Jury?
And Ms. Rollins, or Ms. Powell, if either one can answer this, is that why, why are these, are they putting the broadband on the existing poles, or are these new easement rightaways that they're seeking?
My understanding is that these are new. Um, the, it's a good question. The one, the previous easements that the board approved were going on existing lines, but my understanding is that these are new, so one will have to be underground and another one will be overhead. Above ground.
The reason, the reason I was asking is, I know, I mean, and I, I wasn't quite understanding what the legal needs was, because I know Prince George Electric, not that they did anything wrong at all, but, um, I wouldn't know why they're them having to get them. But anyway, I was just kinda curious as to what the difference was, so.
Yeah.
Not quite understanding it, but I'm fine with this, giving them an easement.
They, they have to replace, um, several hundred poles, um, that's part of their monthly reporting. I, I, I don't know exactly, Ms. Powell probably answered the best way. Uh, but yeah, they, they're actually going in to replace, um, a lot of poles, um, and that is why this project also benefits Dominion in that, uh, they will have new, um, infrastructure in place that will benefit them in the long haul, so. There was probably that agreement between Dominion and Prince George Electric Co-op for this whole project is to provide that pole infrastructure that's needed for the project.
If, and Mr. Chair, if I may just one more question, uh, comment. I, I don't know who's doing it on Dominion's end, or I, I wouldn't mind. I, I've never been clear on what easements were needed, like in the district I represent, but I would mind reaching out to the citizens that, and explaining it, if I knew. Um, and I don't know how to get that information. And I'm just smiling when I said this. Prince George came out here when they're putting up broadband, and he said, hey, you mind if we put a pole down? I said, fine. I like that style, you know, but, uh, but if we knew, just get word back to them, and if we knew, I'd be more than glad to contact the people in my district.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I can provide that information.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. I, I have, I have one question, I just wanted to.
I'm sorry.
See if we can clear it up.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
It's my understanding that, go ahead and, Ms. Rollins.
I wanted to share, since Mr. Jury, that also, that we did send out a letter, um, members of the board and, uh, Mr. Jury, everyone, um, to, uh, all the, the citizens who had those easements outstanding. Um, we did get a number of them back based on probably out-of-town, uh, vacant homes, inadequate addresses and things of that nature, but we did send out a letter to all of the, um, citizens with the, who needed to sign up on the easements.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from board members?
Uh, Reverend Elliott, uh, this is.
Yes.
This is Tim. I also, uh, would like to follow, um, be in line with Mr. Jury's request that, you know, I have, if I could get a list of those in my Surrey district, that have, we have issues not getting those easements, please.
Thank you, board members, that helped expedite, uh, the process. Thank you. Uh, if there be no other questions, uh, can we get a motion on, uh, granting the two easements that is requested on tonight from the board?
Um, Judy, uh, so moved, Mr. Chairman. Um, I've had, um, contact in reference to this in my district, working with the citizens. So, um, in my district, I have been working, and I thought they had been working with my other board members. So I apologize to you all for not, um, sharing that they were working. They are using a, um, company called D O Y L E to, um, contact the citizens, and they are having some problems with a few citizens, so I thought they had contacted all of the, um, board members. But I moved that we would approve those two easements.
We have a motion for the approval of the easements, do we have a second?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury, second.
It has been properly moved and second. Uh, Ms. Chapman, could you give us a roll call vote on the approval of the two easements on the table at this time?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliot.
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Mr. Calhoun needs to abstain from voting on this issue, please.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Calhoun. Motion is carried, thank you. Uh, at this time, we into, uh, unfinished business, uh, employee holiday bonus. I know all of our employees that's on the line, they're anxious to see what we're gonna do with this. So we're gonna ask our county administrator, and that she would come and present.
Yes, absolutely. So again, thank you in advance, again, board members, for, um, willing to meet, um, to consider this for county employees. Legal is on the call, and they assisted in drafting up the ordinance that is required to approve the bonus for eligible, um, officers, employees of Surrey County. Um, you do have it, uh, before you in your agenda material tonight. Um, it does include a, um, bonus for eligible employees who did not receive the hazard pay, um, that was awarded, uh, back in, um, August, I believe. Um, it is a one-time net bonus in the amount of $600 to all full-time employees of the county and of Social Services Department. It includes the constitutional officers and their staff, provided such that those employees remain employed by the county as of, uh, today, December the 17th. It does include a one-time net bonus in the amount of $300 to qualified part-time employees of the county and social services, and the same indicated in the previous paragraph. Again, employees or officers who receive the hazard pay are not eligible for the bonus. Also, it was advised that, uh, we go ahead and include in this ordinance the, uh, bonus that was, uh, approved by the General Assembly, House Bill 505, that provides the sheriff and deputies a one-time bonus payment of the amount of $500. Um, again, it is only to those employees, uh, in the sheriff's department that are considered to be comp board because the county receives reimbursement, um, for $500. Members of the board, nor the county administrator, are eligible to receive this bonus. And, um, this is, of course, uh, based on your approval, does acknowledge, uh, a huge thank you for employees who have definitely worked, uh, and to provide, uh, uh, safe and, um, operations during the course of this pandemic, so we asking for your adoption of this ordinance tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Rollins. Uh, fellow members of the board, you. Yes, Ms. Powell?
Thank you. I just, I believe Ms. Rollins may have said it, but I wanted to make sure that, um, it was pointed out that the, the bonus that's in, um, paragraph B does apply to comp board funded sheriffs, uh, deputies only.
Yes, she did. Thank, thank you, Ms. Powell. Uh, fellow board members, do you have any comments or questions in regards to the ordinance that's before us tonight? I would just like to say that I think, uh, we as supervisors have some of the best employees in the county of Surrey, and they have worked diligently through, uh, this situation dealing with COVID-19. And anytime we have an opportunity to, uh, show appreciation, I think we should do so, because when you have a happy employee, you have a productive employee. So I, I thank, uh, staff for making this, uh, available for us as a board to be able to, uh, show some appreciation for our county employees on tonight. Are there any comments or questions? No, if there are no other comments or questions, the chair would entertain a motion, uh, to adopt the ordinance before us that will provide, uh, bonuses to the county employees and the sheriff's department.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, and I think Ms. Rollins was gonna think she had something to say as well, maybe we're gonna say the same thing. But in the motion, when you make that, um, it probably would be helpful to go ahead and, and make it clear that the bonus for the sheriff's office is just for comp board funded employees, deputies. And I don't know what Ms. Rollins had to say, but I think that should be made clear in the motion.
Thank you so very much. Do you, do you have the, do you have the, the ordinance number, the number for the ordinance?
Ordinance number. I do not have that, um, so I do not know what ordinance number this would be. I do apologize for not including that. Typically, um, I'm asking Ms. Powell, they does have an ordinance number, um, so I, I will have to go back and, and figure what that number is. Ms. Chapman, if you on the call, perhaps maybe you can, um, advise, if you can figure it out, what that ordinance, ordinance number will be, but I don't have it in front of me. I know there's a motion that's on the floor, and Mr. Chairman, um, I was gonna ask that we go ahead and ask for the appropriation of the, um, of the funding for the bonus as well, to make sure that we take care of that part of it. Estimated cost is $39,000.
What's the estimated cost again?
Forty-nine thousand.
Forty-nine?
Thirty-nine. I was gonna say.
Thirty-nine, okay. Thirty-nine, okay. Uh, fellow board members, we do have before us tonight an ordinance for our approval, uh, for the county employees that were not included in the hazard pay, and also for the comp board, uh, sheriff's deputy employees for $500 for the full-time employees, that is $600, and $300 for part-time employees. Could we get a motion in regards to, uh, make an allocation of the, this bonus in the amount of $39,000?
Mr. Chair, Mike Drury, again, I'll make that motion, and again, and for it to be appropriated.
Thank you, sir. Could we have a second?
Second.
It has been properly moved and second. Could we get a roll call vote, Ms. Chapman?
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliot?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Motion is carried, thank you. Uh, at this time, we move to our public comments. If you are on our virtual call, member of the public, uh, we do give way for you at this time, and we give three minutes. If you're here, could you please come in and state your name and the district in which you, uh, live? Are there any public comments at this time? Saying that there be none, we do close public comments at this time. We do open the floor up now for comments from the board, our board members. Uh, please feel free, board members, to make comments. We'll start with our, our vice chair, Mr. Jury from the Dendron District.
Just, just happy holidays to all of y'all, and, uh, just be, be safe. I know y'all will, but, uh, it's, it's wearing on me too. I wanna reach out and hug all y'all, you know, but, uh, hopefully soon, we see a little light at the end of the tunnel with this, and, and I will, will try and, Ms. Rollins, please express this to the staff as well as you. Thanks for all y'all done this year. It's been difficult times, I don't know that any of us, or you, could have predicted it when we started. And, uh, I'll try to be down there Saturday evening. Um, we do have a, a food program that we distribute food from our farm on Saturday, so, so, uh, I, I'm still gonna try to come down there after it's all over with, and thanks so much.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Jury. Ms. Little?
Yes, just wanted to say, um, happy holidays to everyone, staff, board members, and all the citizens of Surrey County, those who are on the line and those who are not, and be safe.
Thank you, Ms. Little. Mr. Calhoun?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'd just like to thank the county and the staff, all those who have participated in the food giveout that was part of two Thanksgiving, and I've heard wonderful comments and a lot of thanks with that, that, uh, when it occurred. I'm looking forward to the, the next one that comes out very shortly, this Saturday. The, the county residents, uh, really appreciate it very much. Ms. Rollins and staff, again, thank you very much for all that you've done and putting up with me for this, uh, this 2020 year as a new board member, as well as a learning curve for me. And thank you very much for that, and as well, wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Calhoun. I would like to say ditto to all of the comments given by the board members. Uh, 2020 has been a challenging year. As Mr. Jury said, none of us could have predicted that we will be in this situation at the beginning of the year, but in spite of it all, we've got a lot, have gotten, have gotten a lot done. A lot have been achieved and accomplished during 2020. And, uh, I thank the board members for their spirit of cooperation. I thank you for your love, uh, for the county of Surrey. Uh, because we, we do have a sincere desire to do the best for the county. It causes us to work together in harmony, and I thank you for that. Uh, 2021, we look forward to be a promising year. Uh, we, we have a lot of things on the agenda, uh, that will move Surrey County forward, and, uh, just ask that we continue to work together, and I've learned a lot, I've learned a lot, uh, coming from, uh, my vocation, being a pastor, dealing with people. I knew before I got in this position that you can't please everybody all the time, but you have to do what is best, what you believe is best for all. And, uh, taking that in, into the frame, my, a mindset of being on this board, I think we've done a great job this coming year, and look for things to be even better in the year to come. And having said that, I thank staff, I thank, uh, you for the hard work that you put in. And, uh, yeah, we're just looking for greater things ahead, so thank you to everybody. Be safe, continue to follow guidelines, and let us have a Merry Christmas. And realize that even though we can't do as per usual, if we know the real means, meaning for Christmas, we will have a Merry Christmas. Thank you. Thank you one and all. At this time, we're going to turn it over to our county administrator for our county administrator's report.
Very brief, and I guess I should say that all the comments, Mr. Elliott, that you just made and all the board members, if the situation was different and, and us delivering the state of the county address on Saturday, all those comments will be infused into an actual event where we was hoping that we would have an opportunity to engage everyone in a more personal level and, and have it indoors. But we know that because of the pandemic, it's going to be very different. But just the same, thank you all so very much. I'm going to reserve a lot of my comments for the address. But again, we could not have gotten through this year without the support of you all as a board in, in, in all that you have done to assist us here in 2020. Thank you all so very much for your assistance, your guidance and for shaping and nourishing us in 2020. Do appreciate you so very much. The only thing I will go over tonight, as you all know, the CARES Act, we are getting closer to December 31st. It is right around the corner. Like Surrey County, I'm sure that all jurisdictions are, are just chomping at the bit to get this all figured out and, and hopefully get all the money spent. Surrey County did receive 1.12 million dollars and equally in two allocations. This spreadsheet that I sent you is a summary breakdown. As you can see, the majority of the funding did go towards our local businesses. I can tell you that on tonight, the Economic Development Authority held its meeting at 5:30, I believe, and they are wrapping up and will be awarding those grants very, in the very near future. So look for a report from the Economic Development Authority, RISB rule as to how they allocated that money. I know they have been working really, really hard to get that done based on the guidelines and the criteria they set aside. And we are looking forward to our businesses receiving those CARES Act funding. A large part of it also went to information technology. I tell you, you, you really kind of feel it going through a pandemic like this when you know that you have, you know, less than adequate information technology. And Mr. Brown has done so much to assist us even pre-pandemic and, and through it all. I can tell without him leading the charge in information technology, I don't know how we would have made it through. So, you know, we definitely got a good handle on information technology based on the money we were able to use towards the CARES funding. So $178,000. Pleased to report, a part of that is the mobile hotspots that are going to be advertised for the public to be used. We're going to put up a news flash. We're going to have that services available on Monday. So the anticipated locations, I think I told you at the last meeting, including the Town of Dindron, Parks and Recreation building there, First Baptist Church here at the sheriff's office and at the pavilion. We're looking at hours, I believe, from 6:00 AM in the morning to nine o'clock PM. Mr. Brown has worked diligently with the folks with Prince George Electric Co-op. We got passwords for everybody to use and we're going to get that posted so the citizens know how they can go to those locations and use those hotspots. Digital marketing, another big piece, $81,000 with the various signs that we're doing throughout the county. The, each town was allocated a portion of the monies. All the towns did not ask for specific uses for the monies. We are purchasing three mobile signs similar to what the county purchased. So at least they'll be able to advertise specifically in the towns of various events and so forth. So that is a good use for that money. The 1250 for the hotspot in Dindron is a part of their monies as well. And I believe the town of Surrey has requested some funding for some shields and things that they put up in town hall. We did allocate money towards parks and recreation. We are ready even during the pandemic and afterwards to kind of start finding ways that we can get our citizens engaged in parks and recreation from a safety standpoint. So we allocated money for outdoor equipment, movie nights and things of that nature to be used for parks and recreation and social connectivity. And you have the list there, sheriff's department mobilized laptops, I should have said mobilized data, data terminals, they're called MDTs. And basically that is a office inside their vehicles. So basically they are able, will be able to do everything inside their vehicles. It will prevent them from having to go to the dispatch office. It will prevent them from having interaction inside the offices. So basically, again, they have an office on the road and everything inside their office. So that was about $91,000 to be used for the sheriff's department. Was able to put lights at the pavilion. You, you know that that pavilion has been used a lot, so we put lights up there, excellent use for CARES. And I, I think that's the hazard pay, $102,000 for government and social services employees. One of the things I hope that can come out of this call and perhaps we can get it in the newspaper if there's some time, but we did allocate money to social services for utility and mortgage assistance. And the last time I talked with Ms. Pierce, that, some of that money is still left. So if you know some citizen who has been adversely impacted by the pandemic, that you use some assistance with utility and or mortgage, then they need to reach out to the Department of Social Services and perhaps there could be some way that they can get assistance there. If you recall, there was a push at the state level whereby utility companies like Hampton Road Sanitation District asked municipalities to apply for some additional money for utility relief. Now, we elected to do it, I'm going to tell you because we know it comes with a whole lot of stipulations, but we went ahead and applied. And based on a Hampton Road Sanitation District accounts, we have about $19,000 worth of accounts that's in arrears, okay, with Hampton Road Sanitation District. Now, we can use some of the money that we got, which was about 16,000, to assist those customers, but the caveat is they have to prove that they had problems paying that bill since the pandemic. So if they were already delivering before, you can't do it that way. There's a lot of paperwork and things of that nature. But if there's an opportunity to reach one or two citizens with it, then I think that we would do our job with that. So again, if you, if you know any customer who is on HRSD and, and needed some assistance because they were adversely impacted by the pandemic, may be able to provide some assistance there. Okay. And other than announcing again, the holiday concert virtual, the state of the county address on Saturday, Mr. Calhoun did mention the, the distribution of the holiday boxes. I went by today and it's amazing, the operation, they have to put all of those boxes together with some wonderful meats and, and produce and stuff for the citizens and the way that they're doing it, again, it, it just warms your heart when you see it. So we're looking forward to citizens being impacted by that as well. But it is going to be all delivery this time. So that is one of the changes that was made based on the governor's guidelines and not having a lot of people to congregate. You need a lot of volunteers in terms of getting that distributed to the citizen. So it's going to be all delivery. They got in contact with school system, they're going to be using buses for that. Again, maintaining the social distance. So everyone who has signed up, all their boxes will be delivered. And it's going to be a very nice box as before. Okay. And I want to say that's all that I have. You know, there's additional information, I'm seeing you all, obviously, you know, as pertains to the pandemic, we've been getting information of, from the health department as pertains to vaccinations and the nature. Only thing that we can do is put the information out there for everybody to read it and be aware of what's going on. So what we're going to do is take the same information that we get from the health department and post it on our site in the area that says, you know, coronavirus updates and nature. And that is a good way for citizens to be able to see the information that we're receiving from our local health department as to the, the pandemic and things of that nature. Okay? And that is all I have on this Saturday.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rollins. Thank you for the job well done. And I just looked at the participants on our program and Minister Stone is on here now. So I just want her to know that she owes Surrey County a prayer. Thank you so very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you all. Have a Merry Christmas and we know that we're going to be blessed with a Happy New Year. We will.
Ms. Elliott?
Yes, Mr. Calhoun?
I'm sorry, you know, can I ask a question, Ms. Rollins? She very nicely mentioned about the food drive that's coming out shortly. Is there, I'm looking, I was looking through my emails, is there a deadline that people can call or has that deadline been passed?
Well, you know what? I would not have had the answer to that question. And looking at the participants on the call, I see that Ms. Valerie Pierce is on. So if I can defer to her, she may be able to answer that question. Ms. Pierce, can you answer that question?
I apologize. I was, I was, I wasn't, I was distracted at the time. My husband distracted me, so I don't know what the question, could you repeat it, please?
Ms. Pierce, I'm, this is Tim Calhoun. I know that you, we're doing a delivery food drive on Saturday. When has the cutoff been exceeded to add folks to that list? Or are there enough boxes to go around? We have extra boxes is what I'm asking.
We, I believe, the last count was maybe 516. So if we exceeded that amount, if we receive additional calls, we put those individuals on a waitlist. And I believe we will have boxes available for them, but they may not be available on Saturday.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other business to draw our attention on tonight, we will now entertain a motion for adjournment until January the 7th, 2021.
So moved.
Really?
Properly moved a second. Mr. Chapman, roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir, roll call, Mr. Elliott?
Yes.
Mr. Jury?
Yes.
Mrs. Little?
Yes.
Mr. Calhoun?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is carried. Guys, take care of yourself, be safe. See you again, 2021. Merry Christmas.
Happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.